Okay, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Happy summer.
Thank you.
Welcome to a meeting of the Hunteran Central Regional High School Board. Please be advised that this and all meetings of the Board are open to the public and media, consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 10:4-6, and that advance notice required therein has been provided. Meeting notice was also posted in the boardroom of the upper school campus, sent to the Courier News, Star Ledger, Express Times, and the Hunteran County Democrat, and sent to the clerks of Delaware Township, East Anwell Township, Flemington Borough, Raritan Township, and Reddington Township. The public will have an opportunity to be heard, as shown on the agenda. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield, here. Mr. Davidson?
Here.
Mrs. Duggan?
Here.
Mr. Fowler?
Here.
Mrs. Hughes?
Here.
Mrs. Kellogg? Mrs. O'Donnell? Mrs. Peterson?
Here.
And Mr. Reimer?
Here.
All right, so the flag, please.
Like the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Who am I going to surprise tonight? Mrs. Bloodfield, would you like to read the district mission statement?
Hunteran Central is an innovative educational community dedicated to the intellectual, social, and emotional safety and growth of all students. While fostering curiosity and promoting wellness, we aspire to create powerful learning experiences, establish strong partnerships, and serve as contributing members of society.
Thank you very much. Minutes, Mrs. Spitzer, do you want me to separate it to two motions? Okay. A motion to approve the regular session minutes of the May 22, 2023 meeting, please.
No move.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Abstain.
Mr. Fowler? Mrs. Oops, hang on, I'm so sorry. Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reimer?
Abstain.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And now may I have a motion for approval of the executive session minutes from the May 22, 2023 meeting?
No move.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan? Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Abstain.
And Mr. Reimer?
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have no correspondence this month, therefore nothing is noted on the agenda. And with that, we'll move right into Dr. Moore's superintendent report.
Thank you. Thank you. Is this, are you picking this up? Good, okay. So commencement for the class of 2023 last Thursday was simply wonderful, and I want to thank Mrs. Hughes. We don't hear you. Mrs. Hughes, make it move your microphone.
I don't think, oh, there we go, mine's working now.
Okay. Sorry about that. So commencement for the class of 2023, wonderful, and I want to thank Mrs. Hughes.
Hello? There you go. All right, so thank you to Mrs. Hughes, and Mrs. Kellogg was present for our commencement. Mr. Davidson, Mrs. Duggan was there, Mrs. Peterson as well. Thank you all for attending. The mist stopped just as we were taking field, and it held off through the rest of the ceremony. We good on the sound? Does it come in and out?
It's in and out.
It's a little bit muffled.
Test, test. Good? All right. So, and I just want to thank Mrs. Tucker and her crew for the live stream thousands of views by the end of the weekend on that ceremony, on the live stream. And also want to thank Mr. Brant, Mr. Estrada, Mr. Brant, our principal, Mr. Estrada, our 12th grade vice principal this year, now moving on to the 9th grade vice principal, right? As well as our entire house office team, Mrs. Rocha, Mrs. Montalbano, of course, and our counseling and nursing team for the 12th grade. Everyone threw a wonderful, wonderful party, and that's not even recognizing all of the love and guidance and work over the past four years to walk with those students to their graduation day. So it was a wonderful, wonderful morning, and "On the Class of 2023" goes to make us even prouder still. Now, tonight, I also want to welcome, we have Farhan Hussain, who is a graduate, a newly minted graduate now, and Mohammed Hamid, they are from the Muslim Students and Friends Club, and they're here to share information about a summit that we held in May, in which students in our affinity groups and our civic participation clubs developed an agenda of joint projects for next year. This has been a continuation of our efforts to grow that structure to ensure broad representation of students to the Board, and we're going to be expanding to other kinds of clubs, next year, service clubs, wellness clubs, others perhaps. So congratulations to Farhan up front, we'll just congratulate him, and Mohammed's going to be starting his senior year, and if all goes well, he's planning to be president of the Muslim Students and Friends Club. Okay, come on up to the podium and give us an update on our May summit.
Trying not to look so awkward, man. All right, so I'm Farhan Hussain. I am, as Dr. Moore mentioned, I'm a recent graduate of Hunteran Central High School, you know, class of 23, the best class. My fellow co-president, Zach, actually was not able to show up. He had scheduling problems, so, but I did bring Mohammed Ali Hamid. This is going to be one of the co-presidents next year for the year of 2324, and he's going to be a senior, and you guys are in good hands. So on May 30, 2023, we had a meeting. Dr. Moore set it up with community members and community-based clubs, such as the Muslim Student Alliance, and what we did was talk about how to bring unity to our community, right? So it was actionable things, such as like actual events we could plan, but it was also things, you know, more long-term, bigger goals. And to create unity and to ensure a place of belonging for all kids, that was our goal. That was our goal in mind, to make sure that this place, as Hunteran Central, is a family for all these kids. Like, we have friends that we do consider family in this community. The goal is to make sure that this community is a family and is unified, and all the different types of diverse culture, that is the biggest goal. And that's why on May 30, Dr. Moore had this stellar student leadership summit where we talked about said goals. One of the biggest ideas was to focus on raising awareness of culture and other commemorations at large events. So the whole idea is, if you want to include people, if you want to bring a community together, you have to understand that community. That is first and foremost, the most important thing. You have to understand the community you are trying to build, and to understand that community, we can bring awareness to already established infrastructure. So that's infrastructure such as football games or pep rallies, that kind of thing that we can bring in notice to different cultures and already established infrastructure is very key. So one group brought up that using a football game, for example, as a platform for awareness of cultural holidays, for example, we are the MSA, so we have Eid, which is, we actually have Eid on Wednesday, this very Wednesday, and Eid is a lot lesser known or lesser celebrated in a sense versus other widely-known holidays. And Eid's importance is where Christmas is to Christianity, where Hanukkah is to Judaism, where Diwali is to Hinduism, and so on and so forth. That is the, you know, the level of importance Eid is for Islam, right? And for example, say we use Eid and have that as like a recognized thing, like Eid Mubarak, which is Happy Eid, right? So say we did that in something like a football game, Muslim students will feel more, you know, recognized, more a part of the community, and that's the whole idea of unity, bringing the community together, make people feel like this is a big family, like a Brady Bunch, but maybe not as 80s and bigger budget, but. It's just really important that we let people know that their cultures are appreciated, their cultures are recognized. We need to let people know that diversity is awesome, and all your differences is what makes you, so that's very important. And like, as my four years in high school, I understood how different people are, and that's what made me love people, is that they are different, and we need to build that understanding in the community, because if we want to build a very healthy, relationship-filled community, we have to give incentive to each group of people to understand that they are recognized as a part of the community and welcome them in the way that these communities each deserve in their own right. Another idea that another group brought in that same summit was proposing an international food fair that would march in line with the run-up to the homecoming game. So this is the more actionable, more, you know, thing that we could achieve in the next year. We, as in Mohammed, that is his problem, because I'm graduated. But it's very similar to the last idea, where sharing culture creates a sense of unity. Again, unity is very important. People are proud of who they are, so why not let people share their pride, and why not let people show their, you know, appreciation for their own culture? That is very important, being proud of your culture, and allowing that to happen in a place where people are trying to understand who they are, trying to figure out who they are in this adolescent stage, that's really important, and that's something we can achieve with this idea of a food fair, because everyone likes food, I like food, I kind of need it to live, but that would be awesome. So another thing that we also brought up in that same summit was acknowledging how important it is that the clubs that celebrate also support each other, because again, we are like a family, and like a family, we have problems, and like a family, we have solutions, so we should build those solutions of problems, work through all that together. That is very important. So an example of this is, say, the Black Student Union was hosting a competition. Other clubs, such as the MSA led by Mohammed, would make commitments to hope, to attend, to bring up that, you know, recognition of said event and get the word out. So like, the whole thing is bring each other up so that we can also go up higher. That's the whole goal. And when we build each other up and show people that each club is a family, we ensure that all our goals are met. We make sure all that has to happen happens, and that every group is celebrated in their own right, because every group deserves celebration. Other ideas that we had was focusing on how to raise awareness and recruit for clubs. So one group brought up in the summit that an opportunity to organize a club fair, something similar we did have already, I actually did that for speech and debate last year, was like having a sort of club fair, and we also did this during lunch, I think early in semester one of my senior year, what was like a lunch fair. Something similar to that will allow more connections to the community, highlighting service opportunities and involvement of smaller clubs in schools across the country, so it's just like understanding like what we have here, the amazing resources we have there. And we're also not alone in our efforts to make our community awesome, so working together can create more opportunities. That's important, more opportunities. Another group in that same summit, we have a lot of ideas, but another group imagined a more accessible and vibrant calendar that students can use. So basically, a calendar is showing our goals, our duties, what we actually want to achieve, because, you know, yeah, I see the road, but I need a sign. Like, the road ahead is very long, it's very, you know, prosperous, but like, I kind of need GPS because I don't know where I'm going. So that's very important. So, and to go in hand with that, an online hub of sites for each club that's readily accessible for each student, even like maybe automatically showing up on their homepage on a school-issued Chromebook could also help. Again, accessibility, unity is important, and to get to unity, accessibility is key, because you can't really do anything if you don't have the tools to do so. So creating a community like this is very important, unity is very important, and making a place as welcome for students. Like, I speak from experience going through high school pretty recently, four years, that being able to connect to your community is very important, like, I mean really important, because unfortunately, a lot of people in this school do feel alone, and I think a community is pivotal to making people not feel alone, because people know that they are wanted, right? But they don't know that they are wanted. And the community is very important to letting kids understand that they are valued, they have an ability to contribute to society and do things for the community. So that's very important, and that's why I'm very passionate about bringing unity, because bringing unity makes the lives of kids better, and that's our goal here, to make lives for kids better. And I found a lot of kindness and belonging in the MSA, and this kid's like my brother, so it's very important. So HC can build themselves up with a very strong foundation and a very strong unified community, and all these ideas are really awesome ways in what we can do. So the biggest stance, I want to leave you guys with this, with a very, very corny line, because I love corny lines, but the biggest stance of courage, the biggest way to show courage in the community is to unlearn all the hatred and show how awesome difference is. That's very important, bringing people together and unifying in unity. So that's about it. I won't keep you any longer, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. So, you know, our policies around, you know, our CARES policy, the policy that calls us to do student government and student representation of the Board, you know, committed to student leadership, and I think that, you know, we get these signals all the time that that's exactly the right way for us to be moving. So thank you both, thank you both. Next up, we have Mr. Brant. Mr. Brant is here to deliver two presentations, one to summarize climate and culture measurement work this year, and there's good news in many areas of the Climate and Culture Survey, sort of comparing it to the prior year, however, certainly still some challenges that Mr. Brant will go over and that will be working on this summer with district and school leadership, making plans for engaging students and parents and broader staff and continuing progress there. Mr. Brant's second presentation is our annual, well, we do it twice annually, our Student Safety Data Systems Report, and he'll be reporting on the first period of the 2223 school year. So from July through, was it December 30, it's the end of the calendar year, right?
Correct, yep.
And then later on in the summer, we report on the second half of the year after we finish all the state reporting. So these are state mandated reports on the Student Safety Data System. So, Mr. Brant, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. First, before I get on with this, I would like to echo Dr. Moore's appreciation and all of you who were able to attend at the graduation last week. I was thinking about it since then, how each year when we have that graduation, it probably is one of the greatest, greatest events that we have in the county with the most number of residents, when you count all the students, their families, you know, the 400 and some staff members here working to help them, shepherd them through the four years. I mean, it's a wonderful ceremony, but it is a celebration for the community too. So thank you for all of you who were able to be there and take time. You know, 10 o'clock on a workday is not too easy to get yourself there. So again, thank you very much, much appreciated. So yes, so this first presentation, I'll keep them both brief. This first one has a lot of information, but I'm only going to talk about a few of the highlights, if you would. It's a measures on school culture. So over the past five years, we've had a variety of different surveys. So there were two years in a row where the administration administered climate surveys, but then we had COVID hit, and in that, one of those years, we stepped away from that typical climate and culture survey, and that year, we spent time surveying the students and families as far as the model of learning going on that year. There was more pressing for that. And then over the last two years, we shifted back to climate and culture surveys. And what we did this year, I'm going to talk mainly about the student results, but we had a student survey and we had a staff survey. So for the student survey, we had over 1,100 students complete it. It was a questionnaire that was voluntary, it was provided in the beginning of April. We also had 40 students interviewed. Now, the initial survey is anonymous, there's no way to track the students and who they are, but as a little thank you at the end, they have a prompt that if they would like to be interviewed as well, they can enter in another form, if you would, where they get to give information about themselves, contact information. So we had 40 students interviewed as well, which provided some, you know, more information, if you would. And then as far as the staff, this year's staff survey was not identical to last year's. This year's staff survey focused on taking last year's results and helping to get information and perspective on prioritization based on last year's survey. And then we have a cohort, and a few months ago, you approved a cohort of 15 staff members who were part of a subcommittee to help take a look at both the staff and the student surveys and to dive into it. The staff members who are part of the student survey, they conducted an initial broad, you know, review of results. We put together, and there's a live for you, and it'll be shared later on for all staff, a link there to comparative results, where they take items from last year's and this year's and compare them side by side. We did dive into some of the specific items, and as well as with those 40 interviews, we called out major themes out of those interviews, and there's also a link there to the results of that, of the interviews. And as far as then, the staff members who took a look at the staff survey, what they did was, they took a look at last year's survey, identified 10 major themes of focal points for that, and then shared back with the staff, and asked to identify what are the priority items out of these 10 themes. And we're working on that now, pulling all those results together. One area that we really focused on too was getting more representation involved in the staff survey and more access to those surveys themselves. I'm going to shift now to the analysis of the student survey results, and this slide is just an example. It's an example of one of the ones that you have linked on that one page, and I brought this one out for a couple of reasons. One, it's to show that it's one of the four major theme areas, four of the broad, the four broad themes that we saw, or that we had as far as the items in the survey focused on academics, and here are two of the ones on academics, climate and safety, relationships with staff and family, and also overall belonging. This one here, I would, I just want to point out two things to it. There are some items, depending on the wording, where the result you want is actually on the negative end, if you would. So for example, this first one here asks you, how likely are you to cheat on an assignment or an assessment? That's an area that you actually hope for a decrease moving forward, so there are some items like that. Those items for the item analysis, I'm going to show in a little bit, we had the reverse, because if we want to show positive growth, we wanted to show the complement of those. The other thing I want to point out is this, most of the quantitative assessment items had a Likert scale of five, five-point Likert scale. If it was a five-point Likert scale, for what I'm going to show you in a little bit, we picked the top three, the top three positive, if you would, results to sum together. If there were only four, then we took the top two. So again, if there were five possible answers, we lumped the top three together to show a growth or not, and if there were four, then we took the top two. Again, there were four broad themes, and each of those themes were, there were a number of different prompts. So for example, in the theme of academics, there were six prompts focused on that, and this is a slide, maybe difficult to see at home, but again, you'll have access to it, where you can see the comparison of the 2122 to the 2223, and to see if there's a difference. And again, that was of the three or the four sectors, if you would, of that pie chart. And happy to say that in the area of academics, all six of the different prompts here saw growth. Now, one thing to note, when you have some type of data analysis like this, there may be very small steps of growth, but when you have accumulation of small steps of growth over six items, for example, that can show a significant amount of growth in total. So we're happy to say there that in the area of academics, we saw growth in all six of those subcategories or six questions, if you would. In the area of climate and safety, this was an area that we had a little bit of a mixed bag, if you would. We had a total of 14 prompts in this area, and of the 14, nine of them saw growth, however, five of them saw decrease, and these are prompting us to focus on those areas, what's going on. Pleased to say, for example, one of the areas that showed significant growth was in, how likely are you to keep at it, keep trying if you encounter a difficult task? We talk a lot about building resilience amongst our students, so that's one that demonstrates that. Also, and just like the young man who just spoke to you, how often do students help decide what goes on at Central? One of the items that we saw significant growth there is on representation, student representation. However, there were a couple of areas that we saw here decrease. So for example, how likely is that someone from your school will bully you, whether it's online or in person? That area saw a decrease. It's not the increase or the positive result we wanted. One thing we saw, both in the qualitative results, the input, but also in the interviews, one area that we saw there was, when we dove a little deeper, girls showed a significant increase or difference than boys, is whether or not they felt they might get bullied, or how likely they are to get bullied. So we want to dive into that for sure. Another area too, that we did not see the increase that we hoped, is it, one of the questions is, which of the following locations do you feel unsafe? And one of those answers was, I feel safe in all locations, and that was an item that saw a decrease, and that's a troubling decrease to me. As principal of the building, that is the last thing I want to see. But again, going into the interviews that we had of the 40 students, and also in the, diving in a little deeper into that one, one of the areas that we saw that as an issue was in lavatories. And the lavatories jumped out, and it's a combination of things. It may be what might be going on in the lavatories, but there was also a worry of being caught in the lavatory when a vape detector went off. That was something that came up over and again in the interviews. So a picture of feeling unsafe, it's a question of what defines safety, if you would, but one way or another, that's something that, even though collectively there was, again, nine out of 14 areas that increased and an improvement, we're identifying areas here that we want to focus on this summer, moving into next year. An area that I can, going back to the comment about graduation being a great event for the whole community, I think a great reflection here is in the section, there were 10 items that focused on relationships with staff and/or family members, and all 10 of those areas saw increase. For example, one of the ones that jumped out at me that I was pleased to see is the increase on, and there were three items there, on how often are you able to talk with a teacher one-on-one, counselor one-on-one, vice principal one-on-one. Even though all three of them saw some increase, it was good to see even greater increases on the ability to talk to with a counselor and a vice principal one-on-one. And also that you see on the bottom there, how often does your family encourage you to do well at school? And if you need to talk to someone about your personal well-being, do you know whom to contact or where to go? Both of those areas were very strong. So to me, that shows that that triangle, that balance of family members involved with their students, education, and also the staff members, that jumped out at me as a positive there, and a resource we can use for sure. And then the fourth area, overall belonging, in this area here, we had nine elements or nine prompts, if you would, that focused on overall belonging. Seven out of the nine saw improvement, two of them did not. The two that saw a little decrease, it jumped out at me that it was actually students' perspectives on other students. How fairly do students at Central treat people of different races, ethnicities, cultures, or sexual orientations? That saw a little bit of a decrease. And again, how often do students at your school have constructive conversations? And again, how often do students at your school have constructive conversations about race? That was a little bit of a decrease. On the flip side, how often do teachers encourage you to think about experiences of someone of a different race, ethnicity, culture, or sexual orientation? That had a great increase there of 7.3%. So much improvement, but we can also see that student-to-student relationships right there could use some explicit assistance, if you would, in helping students model it for them and practicing it. So those are the four main areas that we had, the quantitative comparisons. Again, out of 39 elements, 32 of them saw improvement, but again, the seven that didn't. And some of those that maybe we wanted more improvement than what showed, it gives us some targets moving forward. The next few slides, I'm not going to talk through them all, but a few of them to headline, if you would. These were the, kind of the summaries of the interviews with the 40 students. So these, you can walk through yourself too at your own leisure. However, the major themes here on relationships, they broke them up in flowers and thorns, if you would. Being the math guy, I'm usually the plus and minus, but gets the point across. Some of the flowers here, I love the one to see there, the fantastic experience with teachers. The one that jumps out first right there, there's a handful of thorns, but one of the ones that I want to point out too, because it came up again later on, is that everyone in school should do the mental health first aid training. I point that one out because that comes up actually in my second presentation, if you would. Area of school supports, some of the ones, again, positives there were the students reported appreciation of the sheer amount of resources for their mental health and college and career readiness. One that I truly appreciated here too was neurodivergent students are supported effectively and with compassion at our school. That touches the heart right there. And that's out of students' words right there, not of staff members. So then my students identifying that is wonderful. And then also, there are some thorns here. While praising the counseling staff individually, they noticed that the counselors are all overwhelmed. And basic needs, this is one that reflects and gave more information back to the quantitative study, if you would. They enjoy the freedom of unit lunch, which allows them to decide where they will eat. However, a thorn with it was that everybody eating at once, there are long lines, especially in the 11, 12 building, and it's efficient seating. So that's something we need to work on. Also, the student safety in the bathrooms, that jumped up, and this is where the students were able to verbally explain and give a little more information to the data from the other page. Overall learning, the flowers here, again, students reported for the most part, their teachers are qualified, caring, and create a positive experience for them. They also highlighted the variety and abundance of classes that are offered here. One of the thorns area, hard to get, cannot always get to tutorial, and also looking for more flexibility with their workloads. And that's one of the hard things too. And then the last, last subcategory, if you would, here is extracurriculars. And the students in their interviews pointed out, and this actually goes back to the young man also who presented, several students reported feeling supported in leaders, leading initiatives and opportunities for leadership growth. So that's something that we've been working, Mr. Cohen and I too, as dean of students, we're working on that as a group, trying to give leadership roles to these students more than just activities and things to do, but actual leadership. And a thorn in this area too, which we saw before, and we realize as far as our schedule is concerned, the overlapping of tutorial and sports sometimes. So, quick walkthrough, some of the highlights jumped out. Again, you have all the results in your hands. The next steps, you can see right here, again, with the student survey, dig a little deeper, disaggregate for focal groups, looking for those links between the interviews and the quantitative data, and then working with staff members and students.
Response.
Yeah, and going through that process with that cohort, that was one of the areas that we discussed as well, and we were identifying next year, one of the PD days, when all the staff are here but the students aren't, to be able to do it then.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are these surveys, especially for the staff, is it anonymous?
Yes. The only, the only parts that were not, yes. Both the students and staff were anonymous, and the, each item was also not mandatory, meaning if, so for example, the staff survey asked what department they were in. Now, if they're in a small department, male versus female, now you're narrowing it down, it might be only one of four people who could have answered that. So we left those not mandatory for you to move on in the survey. The only part that, the only items that were not anonymous were the interviews, but they still weren't linked to the original quantitative survey.
And who, who does this go to? Like who aggregated all the results? The only reason I ask is I know years ago, we used to do surveys, and a lot of times the staff didn't want to do it because they thought that it could be, it wasn't, it was supposed to be anonymous, but they were worried that it could come back to them.
Gotcha. So there were, it's a good point. So there were 15 people on that committee from all corners of our program here, that I think probably back in April or March, this board approved. And that was the cohort that they helped develop, but also have access to all the data. And one of the things going off of that thought there about the worry of repercussions, if you would, was, on the staff survey, we put a comment in there. Actually, I think we grabbed language out of the contract as far as no repercussions. To, and somebody other than me or another administrator got up and pleaded also to, you know, members of the HCEA spoke, you know, to say, hey, please, we need your input. This is important. We all, everybody here, and we had them stand up at the meeting, at that, all 15 people stood up so they can see, okay, these are people who are in those meetings, diving through it, so. And again, just like this, getting the information back to them is a key item. Yep.
Hi, Ed. Just a question, the staff survey, you showed 101 staff members responded, which is like 25% of the staff roughly. The student survey had maybe half the students or more responding.
Right.
And it struck me that I would have expected it to be the other way around. I would have expected that all of the staff would have responded, and the students might have been more hesitant. So the question is, how do we get more of the staff to respond here? Because really, if it's anonymous and there are no repercussions, I would think the staff would enjoy taking the opportunity to influence the system by giving us their opinions on the survey.
So I think two, two areas that jump out at me are, number one, showing explicitly certain times where the data helped inform decision-making, linking it purposefully and saying, we made this choice or made this change in the program based on this, or in part due to your input. Like I mentioned about how that first week of school, when we had the student class meetings, and we projected the results of the year before's, some of the items, and we linked some of the changes in our processes to some of those results. You could see the students going, okay, cool. You actually, you asked us, we told you, and even if, even if you don't make an explicit change to a program based on something, at least showing that you've read and digested it. And then I think going back to the idea of providing them time during a PD session, one of those days that we have professional development, to say, hey, you know, during today, take some time to respond to this. It's important. I think if we do both of those, that will, that will help.
So I just want to add two points. One about the, the staff survey also had this year a sort of leadership metric. So there was a list of about a dozen effective leadership traits, and it was asking staff members, you know, how important are each of these to you, and how often do you, do you get these from, from leaders in the district? So we'll have, have an interesting leadership metric there that we'll use this summer. And the other point to make on the student survey is the red committee next month is going to be diving into a lot of the disaggregated stuff as well. We have about a dozen or so of those questions that we earmark as kind of important to our care policy, and so we'll dive into some of the differences there based on student identity and demographics. Again, looking at changes from, from last year to this year. So we'll, we'll have more conversation on all of this throughout the rest of the summer. So, Mr. Brandt, I'll turn it over for your second one now, which is going to be, should be quick. This is our twice annual SSDS report.
Yes. So yes, twice annually, once usually at the end of January, or at the end of December, giving the information from the end of the year prior. So even though right now, we just finished the school year, this is information on the first half of this past school year. So what gets reported, it used to be called the Violence and Vandalism Report from the State, but now it's called the Student Safety Data Systems, or SSDS, report. All these items are reported to the state as we go, but then finalized at the end of the year and verified. So incidents that occur on school grounds, anything that's violence, vandalism, weapons offenses, or substance offenses are reported. And then also, some items that are reported, whether they occur on or off the ground, any, any harassment, intimidation, and bullying, or any other incidences that lead to removal. That's a key item right there that has changed from years past. We also have to report out any HIV training and HIV programs. Again, this is just a cumulative list here, but I do want to point out that the very last bullet, other incidences leading to removal. That's a catch-all of some of the maybe non-threatening, if you would, items that still might lead to an out-of-school suspension that fall under that category. They have to report it as well. So in the first six months there of the school year, leading up to the end of December, we had 16 HIV investigations. All 16 reports that came to my desk as principal, there is this year, if you recall, we made the, an amendment, if you would, to the policy that allows the principal to make an initial determination. But the 16 reports came in, I did not feel that the preliminary determination would stop them there. An instance where that might occur is if, if it was clear that the incident did not meet any of the thresholds that fall under the umbrella of HIV, like an identifying characteristic or a significant disruption to their education. It might still fall under the category of code of conduct violation, and we still handle that with the vice principal and principal and the code of conduct. It just doesn't fall under that. But anyway, out of the first 16 HIV investigations, all 16 went through. 11 of them were confirmed HIBs. And here's a breakdown of the different areas or identifying characteristics linked to those. If that sum is greater than 11, it's because you might have either more than one student involved as a target, or more than one category that was under that involvement. Outside of HIV, the other areas that were reported, the areas of violence, we did have four assaults, four criminal threats, and six fighting incidences, one incidence of vandalism, 19 substance offenses, no weapons of those six months. And then also, you can see, when I mentioned the other in that earlier bullet, these are other areas that led to a suspension, but might not be in one of those common areas. One I wanted to point out, and one of the areas that we made an effort on articulating to the students and families, and the cellphone violation. I want to point out that the cellphone violations here that led to suspensions were not because the student had a cellphone out. That's, that's not as egregious. This is if the student had something on their cellphone, for example, and took a picture in the lavatory and sent it to somebody else. That's different ballgame right there, and we take that very seriously. So I wanted to point out that one there, because on the surface, it looks like as if we suspended a student just because they had a cellphone out in class. I want to, the last two slides are some of the, we have to report out some of the programs that we have to help keep those numbers down. And a couple of them that I want to highlight, we definitely see our activities in interscholastic sports have a positive effect. One of the ones on here I want to highlight, and thank you to you two for supporting it, is the 10th grade teen mental health. That's something we've added this past year. And if you noticed, it was on the previous presentation where that came up in the students' words of that everybody should have that, not just the 10th graders. And then another area, again, coming off of those numbers, and as we take a look at it, as a, as a principal's team, one of the areas that we're looking to make a dent in the numbers that we just showed, moving forward, is reinstituting, if you would, an in-school suspension. We don't have an in-school suspension program. We haven't had one here in a long time. But moving forward, we are instituting one next year, which I like to say in-school support as well. And we look to help both, two sets of students, one where maybe repetitive detentions or a number of detentions aren't, aren't changing the behavior, and where we need some explicit help for those students, and if we have time during the day to work with the students on their behaviors, and at the same time, keep them abreast to what they're learning in class. The other point too is, it's a big jump from having an extended detention to an out-of-school suspension, if you would. So that out-of-school suspension, there are a number of instances too, where we feel that even though our code of conduct might say three or five days out-of-school suspension, we want to get the student back into school as soon as possible. What we can see, the in-school suspension can be that bridge in between, where we can then help the students correct behaviors, if you would, that fall into some of those other categories listed before, but also support them so they're not falling behind in their learning as well. And that's basically it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brandt. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. What is the reporting period? You said this is twice a year. So is this a calendar year?
Correct. So that, yes. So that was the reporting from the beginning of school year to the end of December. And then in December, I'll come back up and report on the second half of this school year.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Well, before December, that usually happens like September, October, we come up, yep, I think it's due to the state in August. I do want to take a quick opportunity just to apologize to folks listening and watching. We're having a few technical difficulties, but I think they're pretty much resolved at this point. So we are looking at our stream. Our stream is, is up and running. But we had a little bit of a snafu there. So let me come back to the agenda. I just have a few more items to go over and some preview on some of the organizational items that are on here. What's on here as well is it's on here every month, our HIV and suspension report, we report on this monthly. And it's not something that all schools do, although mandatorily, the board is supposed to review monthly suspension data. So you see this each month on the agenda. It's on our public agenda each month. And it's important to note, you know, the raw numbers is kind of not the most useful metric for us because we have different numbers of kids every year, and we also have different numbers of students who might have multiple suspensions each year. So the raw numbers kind of go up or down, but we, we're really looking at the rate. And the suspension rate that we look at is the percentage of students who have experienced one or more suspensions. That's your traditional suspension rate. And so if we look at raw numbers, and you asked me, are they too high, are they too low? Like any number is too high, right? Whether it's 170, 194, 193, or one, it's too high. But when we look at rates, that's how we can really... one, it's too high. But when we look at rates, that's how we can really narrow down and track changes over time. So prior to the pandemic, suspension rates were climbing across the state. And we were seeing across the state, 4%, 5%, that means 4% or 5% of students across the state were experiencing some form of suspension. Now, that's looking at all students. So high school students tend to experience more suspensions than elementary school students. So when you zero in on high school, and we kind of have to guess on this based on some of the data we have access to, you're probably talking about 7% or 8% for high school students across the state. Before the pandemic, we were at, you know, anywhere between 2% and 4% of our students experiencing suspension. Now, we don't have good data on statewide rates right now, but schools are generally discussing now, having seen an increase, and we've certainly seen an increase in the rate. Last year, we reported 170-something suspensions at the end of the year and that represented a rate of about 5.5%. This year, as we look at our number, it's down a little bit to 5.2%. So it's heading down. It's only been two years since the pandemic, but we're hoping that our ISS program that Mr. Brandt mentioned will help continue that downward movement and help us bring it into a trend. And also particularly, the ISS program has pointed quite a bit at students who might have repeat suspensions, you know. So suspension recidivism is something that we're looking at there, at that, with that program as well. Couple of other quick notes, you know, over the years, we often find most suspensions in 9th and 10th grade, or we find a good number in 9th and 10th grade, and then they begin to tail off by the time we get to senior year. Now, it's important to remember, we don't see students until they're 14. And the suspendable behaviors that we're talking about are things that often have some deep roots in student behavior. For example, vaping, we're learning from our community prevention partners that vaping is making more and more of an introduction, or they're seeing vaping more and more, first-time vaping in middle school. So some of the bad habits are in place by the time they get here, which really puts into focus the need for us to work more deliberately with our K8s and also with our families on community-based prevention and not just prevention and consequences in school. So that's a key part of what ISS is going to offer and also a key part of what we talk about when we talk about restorative practices. We have seen, and you could see in the, in the HIB stats there, that we've seen increases in, you know, some increases in harassment, in bias incidents, including some bias-related vandalism, substance use in vaping, I noted, and fighting in the past couple of years, notably among the 9th and 10th graders. These things have increased a bit. And again, working with our community prevention partners and more closely with families and K8s, we're hoping to stem that next year through some of our new programs. Now, suspension is encapsulated. It's our District Regulation 5600, which is our student discipline code. That's also summarized in the handbook that parents receive each year. Parents sign off on our handbook each year, and it's right there on our website as well, in the "For Parents" section along the left. And you'll see that infractions are broken down into levels and different consequences are then identified for different levels of offenses or multiple offenses of the same kind of infraction. So we'll continue to update you as we move forward. And of course, on the agenda each month during school, you'll continue to see that report updated each month. Some organizational items tonight that I'll, I got to preview a couple items on the organizational section of the agenda, and I want to preview a quick personnel item, set of items. First, there are several HIBs to move on for tonight. They were presented in closed session last month. We need board approval on a board meeting calendar for July and beyond. And note, as I shared with you in an update by email, that we back to the July and August meetings back a week in order to meet some operational concerns and also in order to accommodate some vacation schedules. So if we need to discuss any concerns, certainly during discussion in organizational items, we can talk about any concerns about the calendar. June meeting next year is also set for graduation, like this year, like right now, right? That doesn't pose any real operational concern for us, right? It's just a matter of preference. And do you feel that that's a good placement? I think we've been doing that for the past few years. We haven't gotten specific feedback on it, but it does, you know, just something to think about. Lots of annual motions here in organizational items. Our broker, Care Plus, Care Plus has been putting two full-time licensed social workers to work with our students and families in the building over the past couple of years, in addition to all of our other supports. On the broker, I want to point out that in O&amp;T, you'll see our benefit rates increases on the agenda as well. And I can't tell you how pleased we are, especially at a time when state health benefits is up double digits, that we're seeing the low percentage increases that we're seeing here. And that's going back to the story we have to tell, you know, as we have the Office of the Comptroller in trying to bully us into state health benefits because it's becoming the insurance of last resort across the state, that we're seeing a much better situation working with our broker. Also, there's a motion in there to establish our ad hoc summer retreat board committee, so we can continue the conversation about scheduling summer board retreats for the purposes of setting goals and others, other things. And lastly, in there, you'll see that we have our staff evaluation instruments noted. We have to do that each year in order to prepare for the next year. Mrs. Candelosi-Hayden and Dr. Webb have continued to do excellent work to take off-the-shelf models like Danielson and others and really work with staff to ensure that those models are tailored to our unique needs and our goals as a school and a community and our mission. So we've heard about those models this year and in previous years in supervisor presentations here, also in Student Life and Program Committee. Quickly on the personnel agenda. There are motions on the personnel agenda that take next steps in the administrative restructuring that we've all been discussing and working on for the past several months. We've heard about it in personnel. You've seen it in different updates from me as well. Now, this coincides with changes that we made in the administration of human resources. So we have made changes in the administration of different departments to try and buy room for us to make these moves. And again, there are more moves to make over the summer, but it's all laid out in such a way as to present as small an impact on the budget. In fact, with the estimates that we have right now, the shifts tonight could represent a savings of $30,000 to $50,000 for the district, actually, in moving the positions around as we've had. In this too, I just want to give a shout out to Mrs. Spitzer and her office, the business office, particularly Mary Ann Stokes over there has been working with Chuck Roberto in IT and also Michael Stahl in the Human Resources Office to continue to build a self-service HR portal, which is providing the technology that's helping us realize some of the efficiencies that make all of this possible. So we've begun onboarding through that system. That used to be an arduous sort of email-based, even paper-based process. We're now beginning with our new candidates to move that all through a much more efficient computerized system. So we're realizing some efficiencies there. Last month, and I'll update you on this, we also discussed last month a county-wide effort to stand up a recruitment office to serve all of the schools across the county, with the thought that we don't really impact as individual schools on some of the workplace diversity goals that we have and some of the larger educator pipelining goals that we have, that we have to work together across the county, that that's the only way that we can really bring scale to this in a way to bring positive change. So I do know that tonight, the Educational Services Commission is at their board meeting tonight, considering a job description for that position. So we've had a lot of positive movement forward. I've been in touch with the Chamber of Commerce, the healthcare sector, the NAACP. I've been in touch with County Economic Development and several others to continue to ensure that there's fertile ground for countywide partnerships and even incentives for working in our county. So that effort's taking off now and I imagine we'll be in a position, or the Educational Services Commission, rather, will be in a position to start entertaining candidates in the coming weeks. One of the interesting projects that's already bearing fruit, that we're not waiting for this to get stood up on, is in cooperation with several colleges and universities. We're working with TCNJ and some others to help paraprofessionals across the county get their teacher certification. Whether or not they have a bachelor's degree, there's programs for lots of different profiles there. We have wonderful paraprofessionals here at Central. They take active roles in everything that we do and do wonderful work for the kids to whom they're assigned and in our inclusion and resource classrooms. Many of them aspire to be teachers and we want to make that possible for them and we want to hold on to them. Now, with the last round of negotiation, the board saw fit to give them tuition reimbursement as part of their package. And so that's a decisive thing here, that's helping them. And recognizing that, you know, the investment that the district makes to continue to bring the best teachers to our students, you know, holds true with our paras and everybody else as well. So we're committed to continuing to grow those folks and just pleased that our paraprofessionals are taking advantage of that opportunity. And with that, Mrs. Hughes, I am done. My report is done for the evening and I turn it back over to you. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Am I working?
Yeah.
Okay. It's forum for any items on the agenda, action items on the agenda, five minutes each speaker. If you'd like to come to the mic, please state your name and residency. Seeing none, we'll move into the organizational items. Can I have a motion, please, to affirm the administration's suspension of 28, 30, and 31?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Abstain.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reimer?
Abstain.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the board meeting dates for the 23, 24 school year?
So move. Second.
Two motions and two seconds. Is there any discussion?
Hey, I have a question. Did, have we, has there any been discussion of a possibility of moving back to two meetings a month?
I think that's going to be a topic for retreat.
Excellent.
Any other questions or comments on the calendar? Hearing none, can I have a roll call?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reimer?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Can I have a motion, please, to appoint our health benefit advisor?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reimer?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. May I please have a motion to appoint Care Plus and Troy County Behavioral Care? Oh, that's the same? Why are they split out then?
Troy County was the organization that didn't bid successfully.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, thank you. Gotcha. Thank you for, no, thank you for correcting me. So can I have a motion, please, to appoint Care Plus for behavioral healthcare services?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reimer?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the four listed staff evaluation instruments for the 23, 24 school year?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reimer?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Okay, folks, two more. Can I have a motion to re-adopt all booster clubs and groups, please?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Just real quick, our policy places, you know, authority on the board to recognize those groups. Do remember, those groups do operate independently from the school, but they require your approval.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reimer?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And finally, can I have a motion, please, to establish an ad hoc summer retreat committee?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reimer?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. With that, we will move right into committee reports. Mr. Davidson, would you like to report on student life and program, please?
Okay. SLP committee met on June 14th, and there are, I have 10 items for approval tonight. The first is tuition and transportation, which is for special ed kids. We do this all the time, and we have 12 of them here listed. The second item is a second policy reading, which we have already looked at, which was eligibility residential and non-residential students, period of time that they can attend the district. We have foreign exchange students who, three of them, one from Brazil, one from Germany, and one from Serbia. And this, of course, will enrich our experiences here. We have approval of a new mentoring plan. The new mentoring, the mentoring plan that we've had gets reviewed every three years, but we now are finding out that in addition to mentoring, new teachers coming in, that we actually are acquiring teachers with experience. So we have to modify the mentoring program to do a little mentoring for them too. And I think this is a real plus. Getting teachers with experience is a real benefit, and this will make it easier for integrating them into the organization. So we also have a professional, our professional development plan was also, is required to be submitted annually, and it will tie into the strategic plan as it normally does. And then as Dr. Moore just reviewed, we are having a number of memorandums of agreement with, of understanding with a number of the higher education schools. We're showing one for TCNJ, which is an articulation agreement. And it's for districts to enter in a collaborative relationship for learners at all levels. Rider University allows qualified students in intro to education courses, the college level. Drew University, teacher education, in-service agreement with Drew, provide professional development through the National Writing Project. And those three things are going to allow us to boost and continue to boost our student capabilities interfacing with their entry into college. We have an item tonight to approve an overnight field trip to Spooky Nook Sports Complex in Men, Pennsylvania for the dance team. It's an annual trip, and they work on their choreography. And finally, Mr. Brandt has informed our committee for you that we have four new proposed clubs, and that's kind of exciting. And let's see, are they listed on here?
Yeah.
Yeah, good. So those are the 10 items that I like a motion to approve, or I'll make a motion to approve items, all 10 items, 2.1 to 2.10.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Knitting and crochet is taking off with some of our teenagers, so it's great to see.
Any other comments? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reimer?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motions carry.
Thank you. Mr. Fowler, will you please report on operations and transportation?
Happily. Oh, good. I have a good mic. All right. Bless you. 20 items to go through tonight. Try not to fall asleep. I'll warn you, it's a warm-up for personnel, which has 30, so. Yay. First is our financial reports for April, standard Board Secretary and Treasurer reports. Next is our invoices, the June invoices, as well as June transfers. Next is our invoices, the June invoices as well as June transfers. Then we start to get into some of the end of the year items. So number four is our end of year capital and maintenance reserve appropriation. It's moving money into our capital reserve account to work on capital projects in the next school year. After that, we have three grants, I believe. The ESEA grant, that is for Elementary and Secondary Education Act granting an amount of $142,922. We have the NJ State and Local Cybersecurity Grant. As everybody knows, cybersecurity is critical, so good to move that grant into action. We have the Individuals with Disabilities and Education Act, IDEA grant, that we're going to be moving. We are going to be moving optional parent-paid electronic device insurance plan for $30 per device next year. We are going to be moving in action to waive any extracurricular activity fees again next year, which is good news for all of our students. Number 10, we have a settlement agreement that we're going to be moving on. This is a result of special education action that's been in front of the Office of Administrative Law. We've come to a resolution and that's good that we've been able to kind of get to a situation that's been a little murky for a while, get that resolved and parents are happy with what we've, we've come to a conclusion on. We have health insurance renewal for the next school year, liability insurance renewal for the next school year. We're going to be moving $5,931.71 back into the capital reserve fund. That is after fiber network upgrade project that we did early in the year. Professional service providers for lab companies and doctors that we're going to be moving into place for next school year, as well as professional service providers. There's a list of them, 10 of them, and their hourly rates on the agenda. We are also going to be moving and awarding bids for transportation routes. You'll see, I believe there's seven that bid and were being accepted. The other, do I have those numbers right? Three, seven, and then there's another six, I believe, that were not awarded? No, eight that were not awarded. We're going to be covering those with district drivers. Number 17, we have a compressor that we're going to be replacing. That's an amount of $48,756.06. Normally, this would go out to bid, but because of the amount, we can just go straight, and the exclusivity of the compressor based off of the vendor that is providing it, we're just going to go straight with them. Then we have under 18, a joint transportation agreement with Del Valle High School for some various field and athletic trips that we're going to be approving. 19 is surplus property, a Grab and Go Oasis cooler that no longer has value that we're going to be getting rid of. And finally, 20 is approve co-op services with NJ Co-op Purchasing Alliance out of Bergen County. I also wanted to report to the board that Noel did come to our O&amp;T meeting. After last board meeting, she asked about some questions regarding bathroom accessibilities and Dr. Moore was able to give us a really good insight, not only showing us maps of all the bathrooms and that we do have capacity of facilities that we need. Really, the challenge is making sure that we have staff that can oversee the accessibility to those bathrooms. And with some changes in schedule next year, we foresee the ability to cover the staffing needs in that space. So we'll be able to open up all the bathrooms that are necessary and should have adequate bathroom availability, looking into next year. If we find that there's still a problem, we're going to grab some objective data, start capturing some information, and determine the next course of action. It was discussed and determined that really adding facilities was a significant investment, right, and a significant amount of work and disruption to the planning of the school. That's not a concern as of now, but that would kind of be one of the next steps to consider, but we want to get a lot of data behind that before we make that decision. So I would like to move those 20 items.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Reimer?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motions carry.
Thank you. Mrs. Blutfeld, can you report on personnel, please?
Yes, so as Mr. Fowler said, we do have 30 items on personnel tonight. Fortunately, they're all pretty straightforward and Dr. Moore already touched on some of the items, so I think I can get through this pretty quickly. Start with the first item. We have one retirement, Peter Stevenson, with 17 years of service. And we have four resignations, including one duty release aide who you'll see in item number three. We are appointing as a business education teacher, along with a bunch of other contractual appointments. Leaves us in pretty good shape going into the next school year. We have our hourly appointments, which are mostly student workers who you'll see are getting paid minimum wage. And then items five and six, we have curriculum writing. You'll notice different tier-one rates because item five is finishing up curriculum writing in this school year and then starting with July 1st, we move to the next school year and the next tier rate. Next item, number seven, we have the appointment of proctors, monitors, and test coordinators. Then we have our appointment of substitute bus drivers and we are approving Dr. Moore's evaluation, at number nine. Starting with 10, we move into all of our summer appointments. So we have the ELL intake testing, summer institute, and summer academy instructors. We have professional educators workshop attendees, although that's actually for tomorrow, so they're still on the tier-one rate for this contract year. In item number 14, we have our summer IEP meetings. Special services, summer child study teamwork. The approval of the summer employment for teachers, paras, nurses, speech therapists, and behaviorists. On to 17, we have our summer bus drivers, summer counseling services, and I think that's it for the summer work. Number 19 is longevity stipend for some unaffiliated positions and that's based on the HCAA contract. In 20, we have a HCEA sidebar agreement that solidifies the Schedule C positions for next year and it also distributes the leftover monies from this past year to some of our unpaid advisors and that's past practice. Then in 21 and 22, we have all of our Schedule C advisors and then Schedule D coaches. 23, SAT course instructors. Then we have our home instructors for next year. On 25, we have a student teacher for special ed from TCNJ. Then we have our professional development in 26. 27, we are approving staff members for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Professional Development Project and that's paid for with ESAR grant funds. We have in 28, the second reading of our two staff dress code policies. 29, we are rescinding two appointments. And finally, in 30, we have the approval and creation of the three job positions that Dr. Moore talked about. So with that, I will move personnel items 1 through 30.
Second.
Thank you. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Little point in the middle of that, but I did want to highlight actually the work that President Hughes has done for the superintendent evaluation. Pulling that together is not easy. Collecting all of our thoughts and all of our feedback on Dr. Moore's evaluation on an annual basis is something that has to be done manually, so President Hughes, thank you. And I also want to highlight, just for everybody's awareness, a big part of that is the, the culture survey and we talked about it in SLP and with, with Ed Brandt, to make sure that we try to get that information a little sooner so we can really encapsulate all of that as part of our superintendent evaluation. So good job to, to Ed and to Lisa on those activities. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually have a question. I don't see on Schedule C RoKappa, History Honor Society. I know Mr. Leonard has done that in the past. Just curious, I was just glancing through, I saw all the other honor societies. Is that intentionally missing?
So, no. And don't be alarmed if you don't see a particular sport or a particular club, those, you know, kind of between June and July, we get that all covered. Sometimes, you know, folks don't put in for those positions quite as quickly as others and so we, we have a couple of months of, of appointing them.
Gotcha, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please, on personnel? Nope, sorry, did you want to say?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
On items 1 through 8 and 10 through 30, yes and abstain on number 9.
Mr. Reimer?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Racism, Equity, and Diversity, and Mrs. O'Donnell is not here. Dr. Moore, do you have anything to update?
Yeah, so we, we didn't have a meeting this month. We had one scheduled, but for various reasons, it fell apart. We do have a plan, though, going into July, as I mentioned earlier, on the climate and culture survey. We have a lot of Policy 8100 measurements that we're going to begin to look at as we move into next year with the broader steering committee for that policy. So that's what's on tap for us for July and August.
Thank you. Communications Committee, Mrs. Kellogg's not here to report. Mrs. Peterson had some internet issues, so wasn't fully there for the meeting. So Dr. Moore, do you just want to update it a little bit?
So we met twice this month because we had missed last month. So we met on June 1st and we met on June 20th. And the bulk of the conversation, or a good chunk of the conversation in those two meetings was outlining and talking through district issues communications procedures. And so in the minutes, you'll see the, the flow chart there that we developed both from sort of looking at our crisis plan and gleaning from, from those plans, what sort of issues and crisis communications they prescribed, thinking about law enforcement and their needs in, in those situations, and then also looking at just the practices that have developed over the years. So we put together that flow chart. Mrs. Tucker in the meetings also presented on the beginnings of sort of social media policy and practice for students and other organizations. So she began by talking about different considerations, including practices for recognizing official, you know, social media accounts. So as we move into next year, we're going to be doing some training, as we move into next school year, we're going to be doing some training over the summer to talk through some considerations there and begin to launch some, some practices in September for recognizing and then also listing for our community, these are the official social media accounts. We had also been talking about how we measure the outcomes of district communications and district communications through Mrs. Tucker's office are, there's a lot of, lot of different avenues that, that flow from that platform. So she'll be presenting in July to the committee sort of a year-end look at all of the communications data and we're going to line that up against the committee descriptions to see if we can come up with some measurements that'll take us into some communications policy development to move into next year. And then, you know, we talked about events communication and so how does the district go about planning graduation, teen safety night, and other kinds of communications? We're going to prepare a flow chart and case study similar to what we did with issues communication and start talking about that this summer as well. And I think that covered everything. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, that covers it for committee reports. We'll move into additional business. Do we have any liaison or delegate reports? I know, Mrs. Peterson, you reported last time. Anybody at any other meetings? Mr. Fowler?
Yeah, so I'd like to talk a little bit about a committee that we don't talk about too much, Joint Transportation Committee. It's like the dufftongues are just a crazy underneath. So for those who might not know, Joint Transportation Committee is actually a branch off of our own committee and it's a partnership with FlemRIR and has representatives from the FlemRIR Board as well as our board. We've been having some challenges in making sure that those meetings are smoothly, quite frankly, and in all transparency. And so we've been undertaking a number of different actions. Still not working? Hello? There we go. All right, all right, I really lean in. So Joint Transportation, what we've been doing is, first, we had someone from FlemRIR who was our chairperson step down two months ago, so we had a reorganization at the last Transportation, Joint Transportation Committee meeting, have reestablished that full group and are really going deep into the bylaws and the documentation that establishes the Joint Transportation Committee. It's been around for roughly 30 years, I want to say, but has been, I think, what Dr. Moore uses is working on a handshake more than on formal bylaws. And so we're working to solidify that. In the meantime, as everybody hopefully can experience, our students are still getting picked up and dropped off on a regular basis, so it's not completely flawed, but we want to make sure that it's a, a smooth-running machine going forward and for future iterations of, of our working together, not only for Flemington Raritan and for 100 and Central, but for Delaware Township and East Amwell, who also uses our services. So we're continuing to work on that. We now meet, we're scheduled to meet on a monthly basis. It's really as needed, but right now, we need it on a monthly basis. And we're talking about a Joint Transportation Committee retreat to focus on those bylaws, get them nailed down, taken care of, out of the way, and move back on to regular business. No actions, just wanted to give that update.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler.
Can I share a quick?
Sure, of course.
Add-on to that. And, you know, Mr. Fowler's describing sort of what's going on, on the policy and sort of board's committee landscape of all of that and I just want to echo and, and bring out a little bit more, something that he said in there. Every day, you know, every day for 180 days and more, that transportation department, the drivers, the dispatchers, the mechanics, you know, we have our health and safety folks there, we have all sorts of folks, and then not to mention, or not to forget, rather, Sue Gouldy and Glenn Berry, who sit on the top of that department. Must be the largest transportation outfit in the county, you know, and every day moves thousands and thousands of students with clockwork precision. So in all of this, I think our goal is to just make sure that the governance of that operation can continue to empower and enable that fantastic daily performance that they, that they do, not without a lot of difficulty, but they sure do make it look easy.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? We'll move into the ad hoc summer retreat committee appointments. We just approved the ad hoc summer retreat committee. On that committee will be Mr. Fowler, Mrs. Duggan, and Mrs. Kellogg. We're on a tight timeframe. We're already at the end of June, so we will be moving quickly over the next few weeks to pull together a agenda. We've talked very informally about doing it again the end of August, so please keep an eye out for a survey for dates, for availability. Last year, I think we did it the end of August, leading into Labor Day weekend. One thing we talked very briefly about was, you know, the benefit of having staff there we did a couple of years ago, so we're going to factor that in in determining when we do retreat. We're probably looking at two half-days again, whether that's two late afternoon evenings and, you know, morning weekend, but we'd like, obviously, everybody's feedback, so please keep an eye out and respond as quickly as you can once that email goes out. And we're looking at possibly bringing New Jersey School Boards representative in to do a presentation on goals, because that's one thing, one concrete result that has to come out of summer retreat is board goals for the next school year. So that's something we need to work on and accomplish, along with a lot of other things. If anybody has any feedback or thoughts, I know, Mrs. Peterson, you just brought up the issue of going back to two meetings, please feel free to start emailing me those thoughts so that we can share that in our next retreat committee meeting. Anybody have any comments or thoughts or questions about that? Okay. Is there any additional board business? Nope. Okay, hearing none, we'll move into our second residence forum for general comments. You'll have five minutes. You'll have five minutes. You'll get one more minute. Please state your name and residency. I believe there's a paper up there, Mrs. Spitzer. Name and town. Remember, the change with the board, your comments, if there is a reply you're seeking, we will follow up with you at some later date if it's a question that we can't answer in the moment. Mr. Rizza, just give me one second, please. I just want to get my timer ready. Okay. Go. Thank you.
My name's David Rizza. I'm from Reddington Township. My comments today are on the climate survey presentation. Last year, when I attended this meeting, I had found some inconsistencies in how the data was presented, and I shared my concerns with the board. So, in viewing this year's presentation, I wanted to see if the same inconsistencies occurred. So, last year, just some of the things that I found was that the presentation didn't accurately summarize the survey results that were sent to the parents and students. And one of the big issues was that it was inconsistent in combining the responses. Like, for example, Principal Brandt, he gave the numbers 60%, 50%, whatever, going down. That's a combination of the responses. So, last year in the presentation, there were six charts that were shown. Two of the charts had the top-two responses. Made sense. That's usually standard on a light card. The top two are considered positive, the middle's considered neutral, and the bottom two are considered negative. The reason why the middle one's considered neutral is because it usually means sometimes or somewhat. That means it could sometimes happen, somewhat happen, sometimes good, sometimes bad. So, you usually don't count the middle one, but if you do, you should be consistent. So, last year, two of them did the top-two results. Perfect. I agree with that. Three of the questions actually added in the middle one. Okay? Well, what is it about those questions where you have to take the three, where the number's low, so you had to jack it up? I don't know. Why count three? And then, one question, shockingly, actually took the four results, the top two, the middle, and the first negative results, and added it. So, it was very inconsistent, so I had brought that out to the board. And the reason why I think that's important was it impacts credibility. So, it just makes you wonder, like, why are you taking different metrics? Just be consistent across all questions. Here's an example, which I thought was the most egregious. The mental health question last year was, it was presented as 78% report that the school addresses mental health concerns. Okay, 78%. Where'd they get that number? It was the top four results, the two positive, the neutral, and the first negative. Wow. Okay. So, what happens if you take the first two positives? It was 24%. Okay, if you had the middle, it was 53%. A far cry from 78. So, my point I'm trying to make is you just have to be consistent. So, when I was looking for Principal Brandt's presentation this year is, will it be consistent? So, one of the things he mentioned is that he's going to take the top three, going to be consistent, not just going to be the two, not just, not going to bring in the fourth one. Okay, that makes sense. So, since the presentation that was on the agenda only had a sample, I think it was two questions, I just wanted to see how those two questions were done. The first question, the cheat on the assessment, he only took the top-two responses, the 56 and the 30, to come up with 86%. The next question, the teachers encourage, he took the top-three. So, once again, it was inconsistent, similar to last year. Now, Principal Brandt mentioned that he was going to take the top-three. Maybe this was an oversight, but maybe, I think you should just take a look to make sure you take the top-three and just be consistent, because obviously, just the one example just took the top-two. The next thing I want to bring up is, last year, after this meeting, I guess it was about a month later, the full results were posted to the website, which allowed us to take a look at the data. So, I know you guys were shared, because you were talking about the full results. So, hopefully, you will post that to the website again this year. It's kind of important because it allows you to find nuances in the data. For example, I think Mr. Fowler kind of brought this up, too, the difference between the top-two and the top-three. If you have a situation, let's say, one of the questions was, do you matter at Central? The answer came out at 60%. If it came back in top one, two, three as 40, 15, and five, that'd be great. If it came back as five, 15, and 40, that would be horrible, because that means only 20% agree. So, a lot of times, that middle question, and Mr. Brandt actually mentioned it as well, it inflates, it's tends to be the higher. So, the top-two are really what matter. So, it'd be great if you guys, after this, within the next month or so, like you did last year, if you could post the full report that you guys have in your thing, in your, I guess, shared docs, so that we can look at the data as well. Thank you.
Jim Bargas, longtime resident of Rer Township. As I mentioned when I first started coming here, my children attended here, they graduated 10 years ago. Reason it caught me back was because there was a woman, my parish young woman, that was attacked during the rally over Roe v. Wade. I want to touch on that tonight, because at the last meeting, I was here, a woman was talking, and she was voicing her frustration with sending emails and having them not responded to and that type of thing. She actually said, at one point, she received a letter with the original PowerPoints that were sent through, and that was all she got. If that issue has not been really addressed, that is a real failing, both on the board and the administration, and it should be. But one of the things I wanted to talk about is a little bit of the deeper things, and I don't want the physical attack, and I'll point out that, at least on the surface, people have been threatened and worried about all our students, even those that are transgender or have different ideas. That was the only physical attack. When you look out deeper, what was really, what nobody looked at was her attack on freedom of speech. Right after that, you should have started and educated people and had things about the meaning of freedom of speech, the need to accept freedom of speech on all counts where you come to. The second thing that was never explained was her view on pro-life. We talk about the need for people to come up and feel and how they need to be recognized and legitimately felt them and felt. What she feels is what I feel, and I've talked to her. There are 3,000 students in your school system here. If it wasn't for abortion, there would have been 4,500. 1,500 students are not walking the halls, learning, love, growing up, and living, and we find that abominable. And those are the type of things that we stand up for and fight for. Along that, 60% of abortions are chemical abortion today. And the way you terminate is you go take two of the pills, and the waste is dumped down the toilet. The thought of 900 people being flushed down the toilet is offensive to us, and we, our views are valid. Her religious freedom was attacked, and in a sense of her views are guided by her religious views. And they were never checked it. Everybody has it. But even in subsequent talks about it, a Jewish rabbi was here, Protestant reverends, Catholics, all stood out, but nobody ever said back that the religious view is important. What happens, though, like in the secular and humanism, which is a religion, those thoughts are being enforced today. So, if you look at the sex education standards, where you talk about acts like masturbation, or you talk about acts like looking at pornography, those are science, but the feeling, whether they're good or bad, is faith-based. And right now, religions like Judaism, Islam, Catholicism, Protestant, would say, no, they're wrong, but the religion of secularism says, right, and that's what's being enforced. And even a school is really infringing on that. Then there were things that happened last year from observations that I saw. Let me make sure I know where I'm going with time. Okay? When we first came out of the issue, we had the issue where people should have meetings, but we had the issue where the LDTV community had a meeting, and there were jackrains. That was a really thought process that knew, it was a firebrand, why didn't we avoid that? Following that incident, there was the issue at the soccer game where, you know, people were taught to have a racial type of slurs. It wasn't, but immediately, the decision was made, and we shut that down until there was no investigation in forehand. Recently, I heard that there was a, I read an article, that there's a young man was offended by a woman's dress and commented derogatory for her. The feedback from the superintendent was, I'm going to take care of that, I'll re-educate that person. Really? Re-educate? These are the type of things that I saw here going through it. Even here from the board, when asked to be notified about the pronoun law, no response for it, and that's going all over states, many places are doing it. And that's what I'm saying. And by the way, one of the things I talked about, as I've looked around, I've been at other boards, teachers are afraid of their jobs. They're afraid to speak out. And if you look at the evidence of a low turnout, that might come into it. So, that's one minute. Mrs. Hughes, I think you're in a real difficult problem here, and I think about four or five years ago, they had the same problem, and they came through eight, and they had to replace this and pretend it. You may have to consider that. As far as the board goes, one of the things that, here's the thing I talked about that Ms. O'Donnell, O'Donnell put together, and if I had done this from my point of view and said some of the derogatory things here, I wouldn't do it, it would be offended, but you guys would have been all over me. Okay? So, one of the things I'm saying, that the boards have problems here, the superintendents have problems here, what I would ask from the board, and you, Mrs. Hughes, is that when the elections come up this year, you open up to debate. You actually hold, you and people who run around for this office, get in front of us, talk about what they want to do, talk about what's right and wrong, and talk about doing it, and make it an opening. Be American. Change the idea that this is an open place to be and start following the things we had. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening. Woodbridge. Thank you. Came in from Woodbridge, under threat of tornado and thunderstorm. Why? My wife asks me that all the time. I've been going to my Board of Ed meetings in Woodbridge for over a year now. About 14 years ago, I heard the call to teach, so I've been teaching high school, mostly math and science, and I'm special ed endorsed for 14 years. And I had these visions, I don't know if you guys remember Welcome Back Cotter, you know, or even more to the point, maybe you're not old enough to know To Sir Would Love. You guys remember that one? Stand and Deliver, any of these ring a bell? All these inspiring, become a teacher? Listen, I wanted to share my perspective, why I've been going to Board of Ed meetings. You know, I'm now 60 years old, and when I was growing up in the '70s, they said, don't trust anyone over 30. I'm twice that age now. And I was as rebellious as the next teenager. I was a know-it-all then, and my wife still thinks that I claim the know-it-all now. But I want to be able to learn here, because I want to assume that you guys are here at this hour, and you're unpaid because you care about education, you care about the students as I do. The problem I've been seeing in 14 years is a lot of things that are out of your control that have, I'd say, lowered the standards of education. I think a lot of high-level, top-down programs, like No Child Left Behind, ended up pushing kids through the system, having not learned very much. They're either uneducated or undereducated a lot of the time, but they didn't want to be a failing school district, so they found ways to move kids through the system. In my day, it wasn't devastating to be left behind. I have a good friend, he got left behind twice, and upon graduating high school, got into a trade, ended up being more financially successful than a lot of us college-educated types. I think this is something that's been going on for a long time. You know, the whole self-esteem movement, you've heard about the helicopter parenting, and you've heard about the old participation trophies. I think a lot of people underestimate kids' resilience, that they can be defeated and not have to get a trophy. You know, they don't have to constantly be picked up. And something that I heard in your mission statement, I hear a lot of it these days, it's social-emotional growth and safety is a priority. And I'm of a generation, when I hear safety, it goes right, my mind goes right to the safe spaces that have been created on college campuses for kids who need safety from ideas that differ from their own. Literally, if there's a speaker that has ideas that are different, from a different perspective than their own, they'll protest it, they'll try to cancel it, and you hear time after time, college campuses, these are college kids or college adults can't handle difference of opinion. Now, I want to share my opinion. My opinion is that as a conservative person, I believe that accommodating, and as a special ed teacher, accommodation has gone too far. We accommodate too many behaviors, we accommodate too many accommodations academically. I literally have an IEP that says, lower my expectations of homework. Not lower the amount of homework given, lower my expectations that if I give homework, they're actually going to do it and return it to me. A lot of this is ruining education. You know the statistics from the Nation's Report Card. 35% are below proficient, can't even read proficiently on the whole gender theory and gender identity. I believe that biology, that there are two sexes. I believe that gender identity and gender roles proceed naturally from the fact that there are two sexes. And I believe this language about gender assigned at birth, it doesn't make inherent sense to me. Who are the experts out there? Is it the affirmation community? Is it the Dutch study that's been debunked? Who are the ones who are expert at transitioning into adulthood out of the awkwardness of prepubescence and puberty? They used to be called parents, they were the experts. Now, we're seeing increasingly that there's a wedge being put between them and the state. The state now has standards that include, and I'll just wrap it up with this, the state includes standards listing all the trusted adults. As a traditional conservative teacher, I don't want to get involved with the romantic and sexual feelings of my students. I don't want to get engaged in politics with them. They should not know my politics as far as I'm concerned, but believe me, gender theory and critical race theory, which is, of course, goes by the name of DEI, social-emotional learning these days, are politically driven. Make no mistake about it. And this wedge between parents and children shall not stand.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak tonight?
Good evening. Sandra Gong, Rer Township. A year ago, I stood up here, and I told you that I attended a parade in New York City. And yesterday, I attended a parade in New York City. And my husband commented, as we were watching this parade with our daughters, that it was a very corporate parade, and I'll tell you why. So, it was the New York City Pride Parade yesterday, again, filled with love and affection and just a lot of happiness, no protests. I'm going to read a list of companies. Delta Airlines, Estee Lauder, Mercedes-Benz, Nordstrom's, Playbill, Deutsche Bank, Sky Vodka, JP Morgan Chase, iHeartRadio, Mastercard, SUNY Colleges, all of them, New York Public Libraries, Keels, L'Oréal, Mazda, Clinique, CBS, Disney. The platinum sponsors of this parade are Macy's and Target. So, for anyone who doesn't believe in pride or LGBTQ, you ought to boycott these companies, but I'm not going to. And finally, it's okay to say gay. Thank you.
I don't get to come to a lot of these, because I teach at a college, and I usually have a Monday class, and I didn't this past semester, so I'm here. Do you want a phone number, too?
No, just the name and the township.
My name is John McKay. I'm 40-year I'm a 40-year resident of Raritan Township. I, like I said, this past semester in college, I didn't have a Monday class, so I was able to come here and, and kind of see the board meetings and listen to what's going on. And I get this feeling that people want to move back to the 60s, and I find that scary. History repeats itself, because unfortunately, we don't learn the first time. I grew up in the 60s. It was a time of unrest and rebellion, and it was, well, like I said, we don't want to go back there. My parents didn't want me to read certain books, I read them all. My parents didn't want me to learn about the, what they called politely, the alternative lifestyle, we learned all about it. And my parents didn't want me to learn about sex, and we worked on that too. The thing is, it was misinformation. We were inundated with misinformation, because we didn't get it from the proper place. That was the problem. We got it from books that came in the mail with brown wrappers that nobody knew what they were supposed to be about. And I just, I just find it hard to believe that these things are dominating, you know, we'll say, board meetings and dominating people's ideas, when the thing is, you know, I, I had an administrative assistant, and I worked with her for 17 years, and we talked about kids, because his kids, her kids were younger than mine, a lot younger than mine. And she said, you know, the thing is, all you can do is teach your kids morals and ethics, and what she called roots and wings, and then you have to let them go. And that's what we have to do, and I think it's time for people to let the Board of Education and the high school do what they're supposed to do, and that's educate our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, with that, we'll close public comment. Are there any additional board comments tonight? Okay. Hearing none, can I have a motion, please, to convene into executive session to discuss HIBs litigation? Personal, do we have any personal? Yeah? Just HIBs.
Some of.
Hi.
We have no action.
We had a conflict.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.